Call to order the planning commission meeting for Thursday, July 21st, 2022. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Crowe, would please go ahead.
Commissioner Knoblock.
Ah, here.
Commissioner Heikala.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
Chair Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki.
Here.
And Commissioner Geisler.
Here.
Thank you. All right, our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
Um, Chair Schwartz, um, I did have a request from the applicant for Tronson Town Homes to move that to the end of the agenda if possible. They're going to be tending in person and they're just coming from another meeting, so to make sure they're here on time.
So move five to six? Switch five and six around?
Yep, correct.
All right, Commissioner Knoblock, you want to make that part of your motion?
Yes. Invert PC 2211 to, um, item number six and, uh, Planning Commission 22-12 to number five, item number five.
I'll second. Go ahead.
Second.
Yeah, it's a motion by, or a second by Casey. So we have a motion by Knoblock, second by Casey, to adopt the agenda as amended. Any comment? Corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And agenda is adopted. Next, we have the approval of our minutes from our June 16th meeting.
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion that we approve the minutes from June 16th.
I'll second it.
Motion by Casey and a second by Knoblock. Any comments, corrections, changes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the minutes are approved.
Abstained.
Abstained.
With two abstentions. Commissioners Bradley and Heikala. Our first order of business this evening is a revocation of a conditional use permit, planning case 96-78 at 10510 Arrowhead Street Northwest, Jack Hanson. Mr. Crowe.
All right, yeah, so our first item on the agenda here, the city is revoking a conditional use permit, home occupation, um, because the property has changed ownership. And so here's just a location map for reference at 10501 Arrowhead Street Northwest. So on November 21st, 1996, the city planning commission approved a home occupation permit for a taxidermy business at this location, and this has been renewed at least through 2017 by the applicant. And during an annual review of home occupation permits, city staff found that the property had changed ownership and that Mr. Jack Hanson was no longer the owner. And so under the code at the time that this home occupation permit, um, was, um, approved, it was recorded against the property and ran with the land. And our code has since changed and those home occupation permits are now issued to an applicant. And if they were to move, um, from the location, that, that would void the home occupation permit and they'd have to apply for a new one at a new location. And so a le- a letter was also sent on June 24th, 2022, to the current owner just to inform them of this matter, and we never heard back whether they had interest in continuing a taxidermy business or were operating one. Um, and so we decided to move forward with this revocation process. So it's really kind of an administrative, kind of cleaning on our end and cleaning the title for the property since at this time it was recorded against the property, and that's no longer the case. And so our staff recommendation is to revoke the home occupation conditional use permit based on the finding that the property to which the home occupation was issued has changed ownership and the home occupation is issued to the applicant and does not run with the land.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Crowe? All right, we need a public hearing on this matter, so at this time I will open a public hearing in planning case 96-78, a revocation of the conditional use permit at 10501 Arrowhead Street Northwest. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak to this case? Seeing none?
Mr. Chair, nobody has a.
Thank you. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and limit comments to the commission. Commission?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikala.
Uh, in planning case 96-78, I move to the commission revoke the home oc- home occupational conditional use permit for the taxidermy business based on the finding that the property to which the home occup- occupation was issued has changed ownership and home occupation is issued to the applicant and does not run with the land.
I'll second that.
Motion by Heikala, second by Knoblock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. And this is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within 10 business days if someone so chooses. All right, our second case this evening is planning case 22-14, a home occupation permit for a chiropractic practice at 10461 Eagle Street, Richard Tollison. Mr. Crowe.
All right. So, yeah, in the planning case 2214, the applicant is requesting approval of a home occupation permit for a chiropractic practice at 10461 Eagle Street. Here again is just a location map, um, showing the address. It's in a planned unit development or PUD. And the, all surrounding, um, homes next to the property are also in the planned unit development. So the, the applicant has 35 years' experience as a practicing chiropractor and is looking to semi-retire and to continue to treat a few long-term patients from his home. And the applicant has indicated that the business would operate, um, up to 25 hours per week, um, 9:00 a.m. to noon and, and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, which is allowed in our code. The patients would park in the driveway of the residence and enter through the front door, right off of the driveway, to the treatment room. And the business would be operated in a room of the home that covers about 236 square feet. And so this is just a floor plan that was attached to the application. My apologies for maybe any confusion. When the applicant had originally submitted, they were thinking this kind of smaller corner room, and then had since after applying felt the room next to it just was a little bit better for their needs. And so the room that the, um, home occupation is in, um, is this one outlined in blue here. This, um, that's the 236 square feet. And then I think the other piece, um, the, the driveway at, at the home can accommodate, um, the vehicles needed. The applicant was indicating that there'd be no more than two vehicles at a time in the driveway, and staff felt that their driveway could accommodate those two vehicles. And so overall, kind of looking at our standards of approval, um, for a home occupation permit, um, staff were comfortable with this application. And so here, um, again, staff are recommending approval with a couple of conditions, and these are more or less just kind of some standard conditions that we've done on home occupation permits, just to reiterate to the applicant some of our different requirements. So again, all vehicles associated with the home occupation are parked in the driveway and that the applicant's vehicle are not parked in the street to provide those spaces. If the applicant was ever looking to do a sign for their business, they'd have to follow, um, our code, as well as any additional rules around the PUD that the house is located in. I believe when I looked it up, it said no more than six square feet for a sign in that, in that PUD. Hours of operation are limited between 9:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. The business would operate a maximum of 30 hours per week. The business can occupy no more than 400 square feet in the home, and then just a general compliance with our Title 11 in the city code. And I believe that the applicant is here in the audience if you have questions for the applicant as well.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Commission, any questions for Mr. Crowe? Is there anything the petitioner would like to add? If so, please come up to the microphone. Nothing? All right. All right, we do need a public hearing on this matter, so at this time I will open a public hearing in planning case 22-14, the home occupation permit for chiropractic practice at 10461 Eagle Street, Richard Tollison. Anyone wish to speak to this case in the public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? And do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, sir.
Thank you. Seeing no one willing to speak, or wanting to speak, we will close the public hearing and list, limit comments to the commission. Commission.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Schmalki.
In planning case 22-14, I'll make a motion to approve the home occupation permit with the conditions that were just described by Mr. Crowe. There were six conditions.
Second.
Motion by Schmalki, second by Geisler. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within 10 business days if someone so chooses. Good luck. All right, our next case is planning case 22-15. A home occupation permit for a dog grooming business at 12911 Crooked Lake Boulevard. Hope I get the name correct. Meili Glasby. Mr. Crowe.
Um, yeah, so in planning case 2215, the applicant is requesting approval for a home occupation permit for a dog grooming business. The applicant would like to operate a by appointment, one-on-one dog grooming shop with no retail or walk-in hours. The applicant would average about six to seven dogs per day between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. Tuesday through Friday, and dogs would be picked up within 15 minutes of being done and wouldn't go outside in the applicant's yard. If a dog would need to be taken outside to relieve themselves, the applicant would take them out on a leash in their own backyard and then back into the, um, shed where the, um, business would be located. And then the grooming shop would operate a spa-like experience, and the applicant doesn't anticipate the volume or interaction of the dogs to be invasive to the neighborhood. Here, the customers would park in the driveway of the residence and walk over to the detached shed, to the dog grooming area. The business would operate in an area of about 384 square feet, with the rest of the shed being used for personal storage and not related to the business. The design and location of the shed must meet all our applicable zoning requirements and have an approved building permit. And the design and location of the shed is subject to staff review through the building permit process and aren't, um, part of the home occupation application, but I have some photos just as a reference to, um, show. So here again is the, um, location map. Um, this is in our LDR2, or Low Density Residential District, um, and all of the homes surrounding it are also in our LDR2 district. This was a site plan that was with the application and is also part of the building permit, and I did talk with, um, the applicant and just letting them know they show a, a driveway or parking addition here in front of the shed, and we wouldn't approve that as part of the building permit, just because in our, in our standards of approval, it says not to have any kind of improved parking just for the sole purpose of a home occupation and would utilize the existing driveway on site. I think given the, the volume, staff felt comfortable with the, the driveway currently there to accommodate, um, customers coming in and out of the site. Um, and here again is just a, a floor plan and some elevations of the shed that are part of the, going through the, um, building permit process right now. And I just outlined here in blue this kind of 384 square foot area, um, of the shed where the business would, um, operate, um, and then the rest of it being the entryway and the personal storage space, um, in the shed. And then I, I put in the staff report and just noting that, given the size of the, the lot here at this address, that they have up to 2,000 square feet of any attached or detached garage and storage space. So the 864 square foot shed that they're proposing would be allowed, um, given the current, um, existing short, uh, storage space that's on, on their lot. And I think, oh, and then the other, um, part of the condition that we're just putting on here, again, is just kind of similar to the last home occupation permit, just making sure that the business doesn't operate more than 400 square feet at the property, as that's one of our standards of approval. And so again, here staff is recommending approval, um, with the conditions, very similar to the last one, again, kind of those, um, boilerplate ones, just to reiterate the conditions and, and what we expect from a home occupation permit. So again, about the vehicles being parked in the driveway, um, any future sign would have to follow our, our sign code. Hours of operation are limited to nine to eight, or 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., excuse me. Business would operate a maximum of 30 hours per week. Business cannot, um, can occupy no more than 400 square feet. All necessary building permits are to be obtained to operate, and then the applicant shall keep animals being groomed indoors. And then I did get an email from a neighbor that I don't know if I should share now or wait till the, um, public hearing, but I did receive an email from the next-door neighbor that they were supportive of the project and called in to say that they couldn't attend today.
I think we'll let you read that during the public hearing.
Perfect. So, yeah, that's what I got for this one.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Crowe. Any questions for Mr. Crowe?
Yeah, Ms., Mr. Chair.
Mr. Casey.
So, Mr. Crowe, did you say something? It looks like it's 384 square feet. Is that the totality of the shed or it's a portion of the shed?
Um, just a portion of the shed. So I believe the shed is 846 square feet.
That's what I thought. I heard a 800 number in there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that's the whole shed here. I know it's kind of probably a little hard to see on the screen. Um, and then this kind of outlined in blue, the, the back half essentially is the, the dog grooming area.
Okay, and then I have a question. I drove by that property, and so when you're looking full-on at the property from the street, is the shed left, right? It's detached, but...
Yeah, um, so if you're kind of looking from the street at the home, the way that they have it proposed on the site plan right now is on the right side.
Okay.
Um, and then I, I did make a note, um, reviewing the building permit, that the detached shed can't be located closer to the front property line than the principal structure or the house on the lot. So that's something we would work with the applicant through the building permit. I know just how it's drawn on the site plan looks pretty close, and so that's something staff would confirm as part of the building permit process.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
Could you also just point out where the existing driveway is, please?
Sure, yeah. So how it is on the site plan right now, um, is this longer light gray box here.
So resident, or excuse me, um, customers then, I'm thinking, well, it doesn't matter if it's winter or summer or whatever, but they'll be walking along the street then to get, um, like, is there, um, I know that we, we don't want them improving to add another driveway or so forth, but what is kind of the walkway that they get from the street to that shed then?
Yeah, I believe, um, the applicant is in, um, attendance as well, so that might be a question, um, to direct with them, how they kind of envision, um, customers kind of walking the dogs over to the shed.
Okay, and I guess part of the reason for asking the question is, considering where the driveway is, considering where the shed is, I'm concerned about people parking on the street. You know, just because it is closer, especially as winter gets here, things like that. So if we could address some of that, um, how we're going to make sure that, um, customers are parking in the driveway and that there is a safe way for them to, um, you know, walk from the driveway to the shed, that's, would be my question.
Okay. Yeah, I guess it, um, what I have in one of our conditions of approval does just state that they do have to park in the driveway and, um, yeah, I guess I'm not quite sure in terms of enforcement, but having that as part of the condition of approval and on the record would help, um, I guess in, in a case of enforcement, if, if it needed to be.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Crowe?
Chair Schwartz, I have a... I have a question for Mr. Crowe. Is that correct on the site plan, the, there's a driveway addition right in front of the detached garage?
Yeah, so that was, um, proposed on the site plan, and then it would have to be approved through our building permit process, and that we wouldn't currently approve it as that is shown, just because of the standards of approval in our home occupation permits, you can't add just like improved parking for the sole purpose of the home occupation. So that wouldn't be on, um, wouldn't be a part of the approval, and that's why I made sure to put it in a condition of approval that, um, how it's shown on the site plan wouldn't be what was approved, if that makes sense.
Thank you. And then I just have a, um, in the recommendation, it says in planning case 22-14, I think it's supposed to say planning case 22-15, which is just minor, but for housekeeping.
Yeah. Thank you for that catch.
Any other questions for Mr. Crowe at this time? All right, petitioner would like to come up, please, and, uh, answer the question that the commissioner had and make any other comments that you wish. Please give your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Meili Glasby, 12911 Crooked Lake Boulevard Northwest. In regards to how people would access the building, I do off, or I would offer in the winter curbside, so I would go get the dogs, and I'm currently, um, in conversation with the building department about adding a sidewalk. It's roughly 75 feet. I would have to get an exact measurement from the driveway to the building. So I'm talking to them about moving the door to the side of the building for access and then adding a, um, paved or a concrete sidewalk that I would keep shovelled, insulted, and everything too. And then in regards to the parking, um, there are no parking signs all over on the street there, because there is no street parking on my side of the street, um, so I don't foresee that being an issue with people, um, parking on the street, so...
Is there anything else you would like to add other than what Mr. Crowe's already said?
I think he's pretty much covered everything.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So I have a question about, so essentially, it's like a drop-off business. There, the client, your client is your dog, but, um, so the cli- the dog stays, but the owner probably goes, generally leaves.
Yeah, they would, yeah. Unless they had to stay. But generally, for dog grooming, um, it's easier when the owners don't stay the whole time, so...
Sure.
Yeah.
So an exchange, in other words, happens in the driveway?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Yes.
Another question I have, you were talking about possibly putting a door on the side of the shed, so in other words, you'd be changing the, the plans of the shed then?
Yes, um, I am getting new plans drawn up, and I've been talking to the building department about that, um, because I currently had it set, um, with the hope of putting the driveway in, um, where then I could meet them right in front of the building, and since that, um, is impossible per city code, I am talking to the building department about moving, getting the plans adjusted and moving the door to the side, so then it's straight access to where they will be parking in the driveway in front of the house.
All right, Mr. Crowe, if you could pull up the, uh, drawing of the, uh, and if you could show on the, on the diagram there where you would be intending to, to put the door then?
Yeah, so the intention would be to put the door right over here instead of in the front. So instead of this front view here, there would be a door where this window would be.
Okay, so your customers would be entering into your, your regular storage area and then going into the...
I would just meet them and get the dog there, um, and then I would bring them back into the grooming area. Yeah, they wouldn't be coming all the way in, um, it would be meeting them there at the door. Just because with the way I had it set up, um, it isn't, I, it's harder to put a door back here, because I'm also working on putting a fence up in the yard for my dogs, so, um, yes.
And you, is that a door then on the backside of the shed as well?
That is exterior access for if I did need to take a dog out into the backyard to use the bathroom.
All right, any other questions from the commission for the petitioner? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, uh, at this time, we do need a public hearing, so I will open a public hearing in planning case 22-15, a home occupation permit for a dro- dog grooming business at 12911 Crooked Lake Boulevard. Glasby, anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing?
Chair Schwartz, if maybe I can just add...
Yes, Mr. Crowe, if you could read that letter?
Sure. Yep, so we, yeah, we, I received a, a voicemail and an email from Kathy Simonsen at 12889 Crooked Lake Boulevard, um, just sharing her support for the project and thought it was a, a welcomed addition to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? And Zoom?
No.
Thank you. At this time, we will then close the public hearing and limit comment to the commission. Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
So just to be clear, if approving this, then knowing that there's potential for changes, do we need to somehow comment that in, or does that just naturally then follow a course of action? Just to be clear.
Well, I would think we possibly could put a condition that any changes to the floor plan of the shed be approved by, by the planning staff?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Geisler?
If I may, I, I guess I look at the conditions here, they're not going to exceed 400 square feet, and the building permit process covers all of the aspects of the construction of it. I, I mean, I think we're, I think we're okay at letting staff run through, control through the building prac- building permit process here, and if we're okay with this business using a conditional permit, meeting those conditions, I think, I think we're all right with that. At least I, I'm all right with that, I should say.
That was my thinking too, that condition number seven kind of covers the basis for, changes to the structure.
Five, six, and seven together, all, all of that covers...
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Someone wish to make a, a motion?
Yeah, so, uh, with that, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Commissioner Geisler.
Uh, in planning case 22-15, uh, that we move approval of the home occupation permit with the listed conditions.
I'll second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Schmalki. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within 10 business days if someone so chooses. Otherwise, good luck. All right, our next case is planning case 22-13, a site plan for Shopoff Industrial Building at 8840 to 8880 Evergreen Boulevard. Shopoff Realty Investments. Mr. Crowe.
All right, yep, so in planning case 2213, the applicant is requesting a site plan approval for a new 32,500 square foot industrial building. So here's just a, a location map. Again, this is kind of located between Green Bay Packaging here, um, and then I think a multi-tenant industrial building, um, and so it'd be occupying this currently vacant, um, piece of the land on the, um, parcel there. And so it's in our industrial district, and then again, is surrounded, all the properties surrounding this property are in our industrial zoning district as well. The applicant again proposes a, a new 32,500 square foot industrial... The applicant again proposes a new 32,500 square foot industrial building on an approximately 3.4 acre site that is currently vacant. The site will be accessed by existing curb cuts on 90th Ave Northwest and 87th Lane Northwest and then trucks would access the loading docks with a new driveway off of 87th Lane Northwest. Here's a site plan of the proposal, just looking at some of our dimensional requirements, it meets our minimum setbacks and coverages. We have a building coverage of 50% of the lot maximum here, they're showing about 22% of building coverage. In terms of our setbacks, again, it meets all of our minimum setbacks and in terms of parking, we, in our code, would have one space per 1,000 square feet of floor area, so a minimum of 33 spaces and they are proposing 48 spaces here on the site. Just looking at some of the circulation and access, as I kind of mentioned a little bit already, the new building would be accessed by vehicles via existing curb cuts on 90th Ave Northwest and 87th Lane Northwest. Trucks would access the building with a new curb cut on 87th Lane and this kind of little turnaround cul-de-sac here, building a new curb cut and driveway for the loading on the southern end of the building. There are 48 parking spaces provided on site, currently no public sidewalk along 90th Ave or 87th Lane, but there is an internal sidewalk system connecting the entrances to the building here on the north to the surrounding parking lots and then there's some various egress exits and things along here, so there's sidewalk connection for everyone on site. Here's just a floor plan, so again, kind of an industrial warehouse building, so pretty straightforward rectangle of a space, showing the entryway here at the building that opens up into the parking lot and I think there's like a glass garage door that they were proposing on the front facade here and then kind of windows along the sides and then the loading dock area here on the southern portion of the building. This is a rendering, just kind of showing the mix of materials, they're showing concrete and cement board and then different colors of cement, I think to help kind of break up some, and provide some visual interest along the building that you can see a little bit better in some of the elevation, so again, here's the, the front showing an awning and glass opening, kind of a darker gray entryway to try to create a focal point, again, big glass windows and a glass garage door. And then along the side, you have windows going along the sides of the building and then these kind of darker gray columns to provide some visual interest and break up the longer wall. And then at these kind of darker gray columns, the roof, it's a little hard to tell in the plans, but they do go up one foot above the rest of the building to, I guess, provide some different shape in, in the roof that we require in our guidelines and so. I think looking through this, staff felt that this proposal had met our minimum requirements in our industrial district. And then for the landscape plan, the city landscaping standards would require nine overstory trees, eight ornamental trees, nine, and nine evergreen trees. The applicant will be keeping about 44 existing trees on site and then has thus proposed nine overstory trees, nine ornamental, and five evergreen trees and so with this proposal, the site still exceeds our minimum landscaping requirements, so staff felt comfortable providing less amount of trees that's required because of the amount that they're already keeping on site and the overall site still exceeds our minimum. And then the same kind of for shrubs, our 278 shrubs would be required and the applicant's proposing 200 and 151 tall grasses and again, staff felt comfortable with this meeting that, that standard and knowing some of the wetland and existing vegetation on the site that'll be preserved. There was a slight note in the engineering comments that there, just to watch for any trees or shrubs on the east side of the building where the water main connection is, so there might just be some potential relocation of like this tree and some shrubbing here, but staff again felt like there was enough room to kind of negotiate that on the site and something we would work with the applicant through, through the process. So here again, staff is recommending the approval of planning case 22-13 with the following conditions, that the engineering comments be addressed, all sustainability comments be considered, the applicant enter into a site security agreement with the city, and then I pulled this from the engineering comments and just again, to kind of put it, reiterated again, to the applicant would establish a right-of-entry agreement between the city and the property owner, so that we have access to their hydrants that are in our public right-of-way, or outside of the public right-of-way. And then I believe the applicants may be here in person or on Zoom potentially, if there's Wyatt, oh, okay, perfect, so yeah, applicants are also here if you have any questions for them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Crowell. Commission, any questions for Mr. Crowell?
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Geisler. Mr. Crowell, could you go back to the first slide that showed the whole property there? Just to hide, so it is the entirety of that parcel, correct? Is, is what, but the, the building is not there, but the entire, that's the parcel?
I believe the parcel, yeah, this doesn't quite line up, it's the like kind of first two rows of parking, I believe, is the parcel line, if I'm remembering correctly.
So does it not extend into that parking lot to the right?
I don't believe so, right?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Geisler, you did consider and approve a preliminary plat for this property, so that lot line configuration shown on, on that aerial photo reflects the, the pre-plat lot lines, the new lot roughly, roughly aligns with the undeveloped, that vacant area at the southwest corner.
Okay.
That plat has now yet been recorded, that lot, new lot actually doesn't have frontage on either public street, so it wouldn't have access over, over the existing parking lot.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So, Mr. Brown, we dealt with this property before and that's when we originally did the other plat, right, that you're referencing, and now this one seeks a final plat and a site plan approval?
Yes, so last fall, the commission considered and approved a preliminary plat for the property, that same applicant is now back with this site plan. The final plat simply goes to the city council, so we wanted to just wait and see what happened tonight and then that final plat will go to council on August 1st presumably.
Okay, so the, in this rendering here, that, no, go back to where you were, yeah, so the wooded area is where the building's going to be, the adjacent to the right of, that looks like all parking, that really belongs to the building to the further right, correct? So.
The, the buildings are under common ownership and will have reciprocal easements, but yet, yes, essentially this new building is, is utilizing a significant amount of parking on, that's, that's currently existing, that site is, is currently overparked.
Okay, and that'll remain parking? And then also, are there parking spots on the north side of the proposed building? Is that, are these 33?
Um, there are, so yeah, there would be 48 spots that they're proposing here just north of the building and so this kind of darker dashed line is, I guess, the, the property line.
Okay.
And so within that, they have 48 spaces to the north here and then, yeah, you're correct, the surrounding, the rest of the building is parking lots for some of the nearby buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Crowell? Is there anything the petitioner would like to add? If so, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record and then make any additional comments?
No, I guess I have questions for them.
Okay, all right. We may have questions further along here. All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case 22-13, the site plan for Shopoff Industrial Building at 8840 to 8880 Evergreen Boulevard, Shopoff Realty Investments. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? And Mr. Butchakoni, anybody on Zoom?
Chair Schwartz. No, not on this agenda item.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will then close the public hearing and list, limit comments to the commission. And commission, any thoughts, comments?
Mr. Chair, I think the...
Mr. Schmokey.
I think everything looks in order, I think that it's going to be a nice addition for that, I'm willing to make a motion to approve the proposed site plan with the following conditions, that all engineering comments be addressed, all sustain, sustainability comments be considered, the applicant enter into a site security agreement with the city and the applicant establish a right-of-entry agreement between the city and property owner to provide the city access to, access for public works and fire department personnel to periodically operate valves and hydrants located outside the public right-of-way to verify proper working condition of the private water main system.
Second.
Motion by Schmokey, second by Casey, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And this is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within 10 business days if anyone so chooses. Mr. Brown, didn't you say the part of this, isn't it the final plat, doesn't that have to go to the council?
The, the final plat for this, that's related to this project is slated to go to the council on August 1st.
Okay, but that's not related to this case specifically?
Correct, that's a separate planning case.
All right, then good luck, folks. All right, our next case then is our jumbling that we did at, for the agenda, and we will move to planning case 22-12, the site plan for a 43-unit apartment building at 4021 Coon Rapids Boulevard. Mr. Brown, you're taking this one?
Yes, I am, good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. This proposed site plan is at the northeast corner of Coon Rapids Boulevard and Blackfoot Street, the site there that is outlined, about .3 acre, .83 acres in size, is currently vacant. It's under the same ownership as an apartment building that's immediately to the east of, of this, the current owner of that building purchased it a few years back, kind of improved, rehabbed the, the building and since that time has purchased this vacant lot next door and is now seeking to, to develop that with kind of a companion apartment building. This site is located within the Port Wellness zoning district and as you likely remember, site plans development in the port districts is tied to the port master plan that's been adopted, so on the screen here is the currently adopted Port Wellness master plan. You can see that site shown kind of in the yellow color at Blackfoot Street at Coon Rapids Boulevard, that is designated for either office or residential development, so the Port Wellness is designed to be kind of a mixed-use district with various uses that support Mercy Hospital and, and surrounding medical offices, so that certainly includes additional medical office, but also does include some commercial and residential uses. Here is the proposed site plan, so again, a 43-unit apartment building, it would be situated in, in a manner that it would front Coon Rapids Boulevard, so between about a 20, 30-foot setback from the Coon Rapids Boulevard right-of-way. The main entrance would be located on, on the west side of the building, the facing Blackfoot Street, you can see there that there would be a main entrance, canopy patio with a sidewalk that goes out to the public sidewalk that is currently along Blackfoot Street. All three streets bordering this site either currently have public sidewalks or have one proposed, in the case of ZS Street on the north, that street is currently being reconstructed and there will be a sidewalk filling a gap along that side, so good pedestrian access here. The building will have a combination of underground parking and surface parking, a total of 64 parking spaces are proposed, 25 of those would be located in an underground garage, the remaining 39 would be located in a surface lot. Some of that surface lot does extend onto the adjacent property, like I said, the, the two buildings would be under common ownership and would have reciprocal easements across one another and this proposed site plan does not include any additional curb cuts onto public streets, so the access to the parking lot and to the underground garage would be through the parking lot of the existing building. Here is the landscape plan and if you can picture the site, there are a number of mature oak trees kind of along Coon Rapids Boulevard there, this applicant is proposing preserving several of those, about eight of those, so it's at least half, if not a little more of those mature trees, since they're in good, good condition. They're also adding a number of new trees and shrubs, generally exceeding what is required by the landscape standards. Here's the first floor plan, the, the floor plans for the other floors are in your packet, I just wanted to go over kind of the first floor configuration since that, that relates to the, the site improvements as well, the building of course, total of four stories, 43 units, so on the first floor, there are just eight units proposed, you can see their entrances on both the east and west side, the first floor would include a fitness room, common area, package room, the trash would be handled inside and the, the trash room would be located on the first floor as well. You can see here kind of the outdoor amenities proposed as part of the project, in the River Rapids Overlay District where this site is located, we do generally require a fair amount in the way of street furniture, outdoor amenities that are either associated with residents of a building or, or the general public. In this case, there are outdoor spaces located on both the east and west sides of the building, so you can see there on the west side, kind of a gas fire pit area, some seating areas, on the other side, some additional seating areas, a grilling area, all landscaped nicely. And here, we also in the River Rapids Overlay District require accent lighting and site lighting, so this drawing just shows the proposed lighting, Bollard-style lighting along some of the sidewalks and along those outdoor spaces, lighting in the soffit and canopy that extends over portions of those outdoor spaces as well as wall sconces on the building. Here are the proposed building elevations, you can see there at the bottom, the north elevation, that's where the parking garage entrance would be, so it would just slope down and through the parking lot there, 25 spaces located underground. In terms of building materials, it, the proposal does meet the 30% brick or stone requirement on, on these two elevations, it's actually closer to 40%. Other materials proposed include fiber cement lap siding, some metal on both the east and west elevations, around the entrances, architectural metal panelists propose metal canopies over those entrance areas, as well as burnished block along the foundation. You can also see here, the proposal does meet all of the design guidelines in both the port district and the River Rapids Overlay District, so that includes things like roof lines, you can see portions of the parapet are elevated above, above the main roof line, there is not any design flexibility requested as, as part of this proposal. You can see here some perspective drawing, so this is looking from the northwest of the site, you can see the parking garage entrance there as well as the west entryway along Blackfoot Street, you can see kind of the recesses and projections in the building as well as the elevated roof line. This is looking from the southwest, little bit better view of that patio, I will note that in these drawings, they don't really capture all the detail of those amenities areas in our... and aren't 100% consistent with them. But it does give you a general idea. You can also see on the south wall facing Coon Rapids Boulevard there, there is a fourth-floor roof deck proposed, yet another amenity space for the residents of this proposed building. Also kind of helps activate that Coon Rapids Boulevard frontage. You can also see there the oak trees that would be preserved. And finally here, looking from the north and east, that is the shared parking lot between the two buildings and that east entry point to the building. So in terms of the applications you're asked to consider tonight, obviously the site plan. Site plans in the Port District also go to councils. So the site plan is a recommendation. We have several conditions of approval listed. I wanted to go over, there are some requests for flexibility, as is often the case in the Port District and in the River Rapids Overlay District where we have generally more prescriptive standards. So it's not uncommon that there's a need to deviate from a few of them. As I mentioned before, there are no requests for design flexibility in this. We do have a request for use flexibility that relates to the density of the project. So you can see on the screen there the findings. There are a few more of them for use flexibility than for a design or dimensional flexibility. And so that relates to the density. As I mentioned, 43 units are proposed. In the Port District, by right, up to 30 units per acre is allowed. The comprehensive plan envisions more than that, provided, you know, certain findings are met in the Port District. That is up to around 50 units per acre. Commissioner Geisler had pointed out, this proposal is actually at 51.4 units per acre. In the staff report, it referenced 50, which is still fine from a comprehensive plan standpoint and certainly particularly when we look at this project as an overall campus. The adjacent building is at about 28 units per acre. So 51.4 acre, units per acre is what is proposed. Generally, staff feels that these findings can be met in this case, particularly those that relate to site amenities, buffers, other elements. We really feel that the design of the building, the amenities provided, pretty significantly exceed what the base requirements are by the code. So we're comfortable in that respect. In terms of integration of uses, like I said, this kind of is a companion building to the three-story building that is next to it and allows for kind of a shared parking situation, allows for full development of the site. And also I add, you know, related to the first finding that deals with unique circumstances, this is a somewhat small and odd-shaped site. It sat vacant for some time, had been listed for sale for some time. So generally, it would be somewhat impractical to develop it with a really low-density residential building, especially given its location right across the street from hospital near major employment centers on a street that has regular route bus service. So overall, staff feels that the findings for flexibility can be met as it relates to density. On the dimensional flexibility, there are two requests for that. One relates to the parking. We require 2 1/4 spaces per unit, which is actually quite a large amount of parking. A total of 1.49 spaces per unit is proposed. As I mentioned, some of those are in an underground garage. Others are on the surface parking. The findings are a little less specific for, or less detailed for dimensional flexibility, generally relate to better integration of uses, other public amenities. As I said before, you know, we're kind of looking at this as a campus sort of project. The adjacent building has 38 parking spaces for 33 units. So that is an even less parking, smaller parking ratio than what is proposed here. And it works out, we're not aware of any issues with parking associated with that project. I'll also add that these are fairly small units. The building includes just four two-bedroom units that are right around 900 square feet. The remainder of the units are all efficiency in one bedroom. They meet our floor area requirements for those types of units, but are in that 500 or 600 square foot range. So they're generally suited more toward, you know, a household of one person. So it's not going to be people with several vehicles living in this type of building. So generally, that amount of parking is suitable for this type of project. And I'll also add that we have approved other projects in similar contexts. For instance, a few years back, and this project did not materialize in the end, but it did go through site plan review on the former Pedersen Floral site about a mile east of here. A project had been approved with about a 1.2 space-per-unit parking ratio, so even less than this. And for, again, for other similar contexts, right around that 1.5, it appears is where the demand generally is for this type of project. And again, you know, we're citing the same amenities. It's a well-designed project that meets or exceeds other standards. And then finally, the other flexibility request relates to the maximum setback from collector and local streets. In the Port District, we actually require a minimum setback of 10 feet for the building from those streets and a maximum of 20. And the idea behind that is to provide a consistent street edge along public streets for new buildings. In this case, we have a unique site here again. It's a small site that has frontage on three different public streets. So it would be somewhat impractical to meet that setback everywhere. So this 10 to 20-foot setback would apply on both Blackfoot and Zia Streets. Along Blackfoot, they're providing about a 26 or 27-foot setback. Obviously, a good portion of that area includes landscaping. It includes that patio and amenity area. Along Zia Street on the north side of the site, that is where the parking lot is located. Obviously, it's going to be important to include at least some surface parking along the project. So we generally felt that the flexibility findings can be met for that setback as well. So again, here, and I apologize, the font got a little jumbled there. But with our motion language, which is in the memo, we're recommending approval of the site plan with several conditions, you know, not particularly substantive. We did add one condition that relates to providing exterior bicycle parking, which the applicant is comfortable with. Also park dedication, site security agreement, and some of the usual conditions related to engineering and sustainability comments. We're also recommending approval of those three flexibility requests, making those findings, again, density, parking, and maximum setback. So I can answer any questions? We do have some representatives of the applicant here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Brown at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Brown, as far as the setbacks go, the setbacks for Coon Rapids Boulevard are within our standards, correct?
That is correct. The setback on that south lot line does need to be required.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown? All right, if the petitioner would like to make a presentation, please, or make any comments, please come to the microphone, give your address for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Pete Keely with Collage Architects. I'm also here with the Hornig family, who owns this property and owns the one next door, as well as some other apartment buildings adjacent to this. And so thank you, Mr. Brown, for a great presentation. So I won't go through too many details. I certainly want to be available to answer questions. But I also want to point out just a couple of things of where we're looking for some flexibility. As far as the setbacks go, I think as well pointed out, but it's also kind of a, let's say, trapezoidal site. So there is maybe a little bit more space on the southwest side. And so to actually kind of fit a square building into that was, you know, somewhat problematic. And then in terms of just overall lot coverage itself, to meet the standards of the lot coverage and have setbacks that had minimums on three sides is difficult, to say the least. So I think what we're really trying to propose here is a really nice building that complements what the rest of the properties that the ownership has. And so right now, this is the reason they're kind of smaller. They are smaller units, but they're brand-new. Some nice amenities to them. So it'll offer a variety within kind of that area to provide decent affordability, but yet some of kind of the newer standards, washers, dryers, in-units, rooftop terraces, amenity spaces, and kind of what I'd say indoor/outdoor living. So the idea where it comes through from the east side to the west side, through the common spaces, package delivery, all of those things are something that tenants really kind of are demanding in this market. And so we're looking to kind of take some of the property and properties and offer something a little nicer, but yet keep them affordable enough. And so thus the sizes in the, you know, 500, 600, and 700 range. And that what we are actually finding with that, those sizes, is that standards in kind of, I'd say suburban areas are about one stall per bedroom. We're well over that in terms of one stall per bedroom. But that's been kind of the mark in terms of, we've gone back and done some analyses. Parking's expensive to build in terms of land area. It creates impervious surface, which is problematic for a number of reasons. And so we don't necessarily want to overbuild the parking. We're very comfortable that that number, where we're at right now, exceeds that kind of one per bedroom plus visitors plus some. We do think accessing off the existing drive aisle will allow us to help maintain all of that better in conjunction with the other properties. So we have the ability to kind of function all of that together. So we're pretty confident that that works and parks pretty well. So I think with that, unless, Dave, you want to talk something about your other properties?
Yeah. Good evening, hi, I'm John Hornig with the Hornig Companies. I'm a representative of the third generation of our family to be in the multifamily business. Our property management company is called Hornig Companies, Inc. And we've just been recognized by the Star Tribune as a top workplace for the seventh straight year, which we're proud of. We're an owner-operator. We don't do third-party management. So we just oversee our own things. We just have a little under 5,000 units now in the metro area. Just over 20 years ago, we entered Coon Rapids on Zia, on Zia Street, and we bought 192 units just down the street from this site. There, we have 144 two-bedroom apartments out of 192. So we're heavy, 75% two-bedrooms. And then a couple of years ago, property called the Loftus Center was for sale. And that property had caused quite a bit of trouble for us in our operations over the years. And when my parents proposed to buy it, I thought they were crazy because it had a lot of issues. But they had committed to taking care of our Heritage Heights property down the street. And so we did buy that property and we've now got it stabilized and it's running really well. So we have this site next door and we thought to add to our properties there on the street. This would be a nice complement, a complement of unit mix and of newer product to mix with what we have there. So thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner, any questions for the petitioners before we continue? Mr. Chair. Commissioner Casey.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, I'm just looking mine up.
Commissioner Geisler. Mr. Hornig or Mr. Keely, whoever, just a question about the sustainability comments, specifically around EV chargers. It's becoming a bigger, bigger question for multi-units to at least if you've got indoor parking, are you planning for it? Are you wiring for it? Are you preparing for the future here for this hopefully longstanding apartment building?
Yes, so we will provide an EV charger. And then the current trend on how to do this is so that you can then begin to add more as EVs become more and more prevalent. So that's, the initial wiring goes in to make that possible. And then as management deems it necessary, as more vehicles come online, then it can just kind of be linked and added from one to the next.
So you're prepared, but you'll add chargers as demand goes? Thank you.
Commissioner Casey.
Yeah, so I like the drawings, the renderings, the mix of materials is attractive for that corner. One of my questions was, are the two properties going to be linked with signage? Or they're going to share some parking spaces? Are they going to be linked with signage or any other way? Or run separately?
Yeah, there will be certainly signage, kind of wayfinding signage between those. There will be cross-easements between those. There will be management things that cross-function, whether it's mowing the lawn and plowing, so on and so forth. But that's really kind of, I would say, maybe the extent of the linkage is more, I would say, on the management side. So the tenants and the parking will be signed for one building, would be signed for the other building. The current building is working well with the 38 parking stalls as it is, which would essentially remain as is.
So the amenities with this new build are nice, they look great. Did you, in the remodel, add amenities to the other property? Or they won't be shared or anything like that?
No, no, they won't be shared. And besides, we actually added three units to the building next door. But other than that, just remodeled.
Yeah, okay. I think that was my question. Thank you.
I've got a few questions. How many floors are in the existing building? How tall is the existing building?
The building next door, three.
So that was three floors, but you're, you want this building to be four floors. And how about a playground area? I haven't seen any mention of that.
There's not a, there is not a playground per se. We see the studio in one bedrooms not necessarily serving a family function, slightly different. So there'd be outdoor spaces. There are places to play outside in terms of green spaces, but there's not a playground per se proposed.
Does your existing building have a playground area?
Next door at Heritage Heights, yes, we have other outdoor amenities, such as we have two swimming pools and workout facilities and such.
Mr. Chair.
That, I'm talking about the building that's immediately next to this one?
No, sir. There's no playground structure there.
So you're not going to provide any playground structure for either building?
That's correct.
And I understand that they may be studios in one bedrooms, but they're certainly more than likely going to be visited by grandkids and what have you. They're not going to have anywhere to play? Or they're going to have to make up their own type of play areas?
Well, there will be outdoor play areas. There are outdoor gathering spaces. There are grass areas. But as far as things to climb on or swings, then no.
And as far as you're saying that the parking you're suggesting is sufficient, if it's not, where's overflow parking going to go? Can they park on the street there? I don't believe they can.
No, I don't believe there's any street parking on it. Though, we're pretty convinced that that is the right number. That number and the parking actually certainly affects the rental. So from a management point of view, the ability to get the parking right is really important. And so otherwise, it means rentals. And so certainly don't want to have vacancies in those units. Not being able to park can mean vacancies. We have found that over time, I think the number of parking is actually going down. Car ownership is decreasing. There is transit available, but mostly we're convinced that the number is correct. There is the possibility of remodeling the existing parking lot if things were, got to a point. But that's not something that we're planning at this point or even think we would need to.
But you're not taking into account any visitors? I mean, again, on a weekend or whatever, let's say the grandparent-- I mean, again, on a weekend or whatever, let's say the grandparent has got one of your one-bedroom apartments, and their kid with their grandkids come over for the weekend or for part of the day on Saturday or Sunday for a picnic, what have you. You literally have no parking for visitors because you really don't have enough space for, at least by our code, for existing parking for residents.
Well, there's, in our belief, it's one per bedroom that kind of works in terms to park the residents within it. There's 43 units. There's four two-bedrooms for a total of 47, and we have 64 parking stalls. So there's 17 available for guests, for parents, for grandparents. The other thing that happens very often in a multifamily building is that as people visit here, somebody in that building is also visiting somewhere else. So the, it's open, there's open parking, so that it's, as people are coming and going, it's very rare to see a multifamily building where everybody is there and there's visitors. So there is the ability to have, whatever that number was, 64 minus 47, 17 stalls for
Yeah, I'm still not sold on the parking, but...
Mr. Chair?
Somebody on here.
Sorry.
Commissioner Michael?
Mr. Chair? Real briefly, we usually talk somewhat about pets. Is there a pet area, is there some place to walk the dogs? And then the second part, I'm thinking about, people have, are they allowed to have multiple cars? Does a tenant have, a husband and wife, each have their own cars, that's going to use up more parking spots?
Well, that'll be determined by our unit occupancy, of course, but also to speak of parking. We manage over 150 properties for over 50 years, and our judgment in this area is that this is a reasonable amount of parking. It should work excellent in this area. We've managed for over 20 years on the street. So, and then of course, in other communities as well. So we feel like this is an appropriate number of parking. As far as, as far as pets, right now, we don't accept pets at our other properties, but we will have to review that, and then we would, you know, possibly add an area for dog walking or something in the appropriate area if that was something the market...
And that hasn't, that hasn't come up in the other building at all?
No.
Chair Schwartz.
Mr. Schwartz.
So I was going to just respond, Chair Schwartz, to the parking issue. The thing, I guess I'm considering, is that there are 20 studios in 19 one-bedrooms and only four two-bedrooms. So the math that they're applying with regard to the one-per-bedroom kind of a thing, it seems reasonable. There will still be, if you apply that math, there will be still some extra. I'm getting the impression this isn't an apartment complex where it's drawing large families or, you know, things like this. This is probably, as you've stated, this is serving, you know, a need for some of the major businesses around the area, maybe more short-term rental, right, or somewhat, but not where it's family-oriented and so forth, where you would see normally probably two cars per apartment and so forth. So I just wanted to comment that, looking at the, at the parking. I'd normally not be very comfortable with this, but again, taking that into consideration, it's reasonable. I do, in terms of overflow, is there a potential that residents between the two sites might want to try to park on each other's, you know, on the other lots, right, to, if it is full or it's not convenient for them, whatever? And do you have any concerns or things like that with regard to them trying to do something like that?
You know, that's a property management issue. I think that we should be able to, since we'll own both properties, and we should be able to work with our residents to find suitable parking for, you know, each resident that's close to their, to their building.
To your point, if it's not convenient, you lose tenants.
Right. I mean, like Pete said, parking is incredibly important in renting. So we need to have the right amount of parking. And that includes guest parking. So if you know that you're going to have your grandkids over, we know that we need to be able to park those people. And we feel with our experience in property management for a long time that this is a reasonable amount of parking here.
Thank you.
Chair Schwartz. Just briefly in response to Commissioner Schmalky's comment, we have 19 one-bedroom units, and let's just say half of those are occupied by husband-wives, couples. Now you've got at least 10 of your one-bedrooms that are possibly two cars.
Agreed. But I think that there, the hard part about this is that, is that times really are changing, right? In my own home, we reduced to one vehicle, husband-wife, one vehicle. And while that's not everybody doing that, it is, I mean, there are changes, and they are talking about, you know, utilizing public transportation more, things like that. I don't know if that's, I mean, there's no crystal ball to say that is what the need is going to be or how it's going to be serviced exactly, but I think, in my opinion, I feel like they've done, you know, their due diligence to address it. They've expressed that it's important. I'm willing to trust that it is, you know, that it's reasonable for the clientele, the purpose of the occupants in that, that it's probably suitable. I'm getting the impression that this isn't a family apartment building where you're going to have that need of dual parents running children around and so forth. I don't know. I'm just going on that hunch, but that, and that's no more dependable than, again, taking out a crystal ball and saying, what's the future going to lie with regard to two vehicles per family? So...
I'll address it. Do you ask more of it later? Commissioner Knoblauch?
Yeah, I have a question for the applicant or for Mr. Brown. On the east side of the proposed building, there's a patio with grilling space. There is an item just north towards the northeast corner of the proposed building. Is that, are those just like blocks? Or I'm not sure what the facility, what the part is just north of the patio grilling Right up against the...
Oh, we had left aside an area that was going to be for the bike racks.
Oh, okay.
So we've got the concrete kind of put out right now for that. We have not, actually done, called out for the bike racks, but that's what that little space is for.
Excellent. Thank you. And that kind of leads into my second question is, as proposed, provide exterior guest bicycle parking. That was my question is, where would that be located outside? So thank you. Two for one.
And that's along the east side, you're saying?
East side of the building, yeah.
Okay.
All right, any other questions right now for the petitioners? All right, we may have more questions later. All right, we do need a public hearing, so at this time I will open a public hearing in plan case 22-12, the site plan for a 43-unit apartment building at 4021 Coon Rapids Boulevard. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Please come to the microphone, give your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Jerry Polacek. I live at 12187 Bluebird Circle. And I question the parking issue here. For example, if you look at 121st West of Hanson, where there are rental units, almost all of the time, the overflow parking there fills up the south side of that street. So I don't see where they're coming up with their numbers. Those are all rental units there. They have plenty of parking, but there is always overflow parking on that side. So I question their numbers. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to public hearing? This is your chance to speak if you wish. Anyone else wish to speak? And Mr. Bouchacorni, anybody on Zoom?
No, sir.
Thank you. At this time, I will then, one final chance, public hearing. Anybody wish to speak? All right, see none? We'll close, excuse me, close the public hearing. I'll begin by saying, I've got a real issue with parking issues. Number one, are the enclosed underground parking, they're providing 20, 25. Our code requires one per unit, which would be 43. They're just barely, a little over 50% of our required parking for underground parking. The, I, I question the thinking on the parking that's going to be needed, just to bring everybody's attention briefly back to the units that we put in at Riverdale Station. If, they said they had plenty of parking up there as well. If you go up there at any evening, there's anywhere between approximately 50 or more cars parked in the transit parking lot next door to the apartments because there isn't enough parking. And now we just completed or approved the building for, not, the third phase of building, which again is going to create additional parking requirements up there. Right now, they've got an overflow parking area. This particular project has no overflow area. What are they going to do? Go over and park at Mercy Hospital? I'm, I just don't believe that the required parking is being met here. I also have an issue with the 50 units per acre. Currently, our, currently our code allows up to 30 units per acre. Granted, the 2040 comprehensive plan ups it to 50, but we're nowhere near the 2040 comprehensive plan being in effect yet. So I have an issue with the density as well. And that's all I have. Right now, I have more later, but allow others to speak.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Geisler?
So I will say, when it comes to a lot of our other parking struck, or apartments that we've been looking at, the mix of units is significantly more bedroom-intensive than this is. Half the things we're talking about here don't qualify as a one-bedroom even, which is a pretty basic apartment. Most people don't build a life for a long-term place in a studio in our suburban structure where we're at. Maybe in New York, maybe in LA. Not so much here. I would be surprised to see the studios have more than one person. I'd be surprised, honestly, if we're getting one car per studio. I could easily see college students taking this and biking over the college and not even owning a car at all. I could see people walking to Mercy and using the bus for everything else. So I can understand, especially based on the jobs nearby and the services nearby, how this could be a walkable, livable space. We've got a grocery store just up the road in Anoka, too. So I can understand the parking being a little lighter here compared to the larger complexes where we've been pushing, you know, there are no studios. Their minimum is a one-bedroom and two-bedroom and three-bedroom apartments, which are much more conducive to a car-intensive life for what we're looking at, or a multiple-driver household is maybe is a better way to phrase that. With respect to the underground parking, I guess, I, my struggle here is that if we want them to reach the underground parking requirement, the building gets bigger, which increases the, either the size of the units and increases the impervious surface that we're doing because the building gets bigger. And then we generally could be adding more people, which increases the density, which, so that to me becomes a circular problem based on the nature of how this site is built. They've come to us with a small unit plan is what they're looking at, that they're tailoring to a different market than what we typically have seen the previous apartment buildings for. I think that bears with it a little bit of consideration. As far as four stories, I will admit that I am struggling a little bit with that part of this. The neighboring building is three stories. The other building, all the things to the north are single-family homes and obviously one, two-story total roofline. The only thing, four, three, above three stories nearby is the hospital. It is a pretty big building for that space. You know, roughly, if it was a three-story with the exact same plan, it puts us in about the 40-ish units per acre, give or take, again, without re, just guessing. That feels much more conducive to a lot of the conversation we're having right now. But that said, this is, this is a stretch, but it's also a less intensive multifamily building compared to many of the other ones we've seen in the last few years.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Casey?
I remember back when we looked at the Peterson, Pedersen property, and we, that was one where we were squeezing things in, too. And my, my thought then, and it applies to this property now, is it's a targeted residential area. I mean, you're catering to the hospital workers. So many of those young nurses out of school, they're not married, they're looking for that first job. What's better than to have a apartment just right across the street? And then you have college students. While it's a commuter ARCC, it's a commuter campus, you don't, you do have people who come from 100 miles away, maybe they do want to live here. And the fact that there's bikes available and buses makes me, I look at it the same way we did that Pedersen lot, is it's going to serve a market and a clientele. And so I can, I can go with the parking because I don't think, I don't think every apartment is going to have a, is going to have a car associated with it, just by nature of who's going to be employed around there.
Well, back to the Pedersen property, I was, I was one not in favor of that property or project partially because of the parking. As far as the students from Anoka Ramsey wanting to live here, there's a huge apartment, two apartment complexes next door and across the street from the college that I think are going to get utilized by the college students long before this one will. As far as the comments on the fourth floor, if we were to get rid of the fourth floor and only have three floors, number one, it would take up less units, which would then allow the 25 enclosed underground parking spaces to be a little closer to code and would bring down the overall number of parking spaces that would be needed. would bring down the overall number of parking spaces that would be needed, again, raising the spaces per unit a little, still not to code requirements. Those are, those are my comments to Commissioner Geisler's remarks. Commissioner Bradley.
Citing, you know, some of the prior projects that were approved that had some of these issues, let's face it, we're not here to be doomed to repeat some of our prior mistakes. We've approved projects that are, have been problematic because of parking. We have guidelines that the city or this commission has chosen not to follow at times, arguing that the, the parking issue with the underground parking and the way to meet that, about increasing unit size, space, impervious, is, is kind of tunnel vision in that, you know, simple mathematics, you keep the number of parking spaces and you reduce the number of units. You can make it work and you can bring it into compliance with our current code. Unfortunately, there's many people that seem like they want to do any kind of contortion possible to squeeze in as much density as possible. And I think it's a disservice to the residents and to the city.
Anyone else have comment?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I'm in favor of the applicant. It is, it does meet the use requirements. I understand some of the limitations and concerns that have been voiced, but the office complex right across the street is, I don't know how many floors, Mercy Hospital's quite large. It's, it's on the verge, it's a office residential, usage as part of the Port Wellness District. So I know it's not ideal, but weighing in consideration of all the factors and such, I think one thing the commission should consider is that there is, with the current economic climate, there has to be a little bit more weighted concern on the feasibility of, you know, ideally, you could make a requirement that the building is only two stories. Well, that would not be feasible for a numerous, many projects. So three to four floors and with studios and the requirement, there is a cost-benefit breakoff. So, and I, I don't, I, I do find it a little concerning, the, the fourth floor as part of the project, but we're not talking hundreds of units or, or such in the area. And there are a lot of other larger apartment units like that in more residential areas, whereas this is in, across from a medical building that's connected across the street with a sky, skywalk to Mercy Hospital. So I think with all those factors concerned, I think of a four-floor studio, very appealing looking, newer, modern unit, I think it would be able to fit a lot of the other goals that the city of Coon Rapids has, especially being right off of Coon Rapids Boulevard. I think it would be a good addition. So I, I like it more than I don't like some of the requirements not being met, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmuckey.
I just want to comment on Commissioner Bradley's statements. I, I do agree. I mean, there is, there is an element, though, too, of, you know, we do continue to give these flexibilities, right? And we have seen where some of those decisions have not probably been the best, right? I am trying to really be conscious here of the fact that these are studios, not larger apartments, and trying to think of it in those terms with regard to the density, with regard to the parking spaces and so forth. So that's, that's my justification. I think I really, when I initially looked at this, I was way over on the right with Commissioner Bradley, that it's like, we've, you know, we've got to draw a line here at some point, that, you know, we've got to be compliant to the, the code. It's there for good reason, right? But I think that's, that's kind of where I'm going in terms of the justification for maybe in this particular case.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Yeah. There's merit there in what you say, and I see Commissioner Bradley's issue, too, but I'm inclined to, to look at, on this favorably because of location, purpose served, clientele So, anyway, that's, I'm inclined to, to go along.
Problem I see is we can't guarantee what the, the customer's going to be. We can't guarantee that the rentals are going to be by, by nurses and by students. And there's nothing to prevent the people renting the apartments to be, to be married, couples needing two parking spaces. And we still haven't spent much time discussing the lack of the playground equipment, which is something we almost always require on any kind of apartment building. There's been really no mention of the lack of playground equipment. Mr. Brown, can you indicate or do you have any knowledge? How close would the closest park be?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I can answer that question for you.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mercy Park is 1,200 feet away, just across the boulevard, so on the other side of the hospital. So very, quarter-mile walk, well within distance.
Across a very busy high roadway.
But it is signaled and it is managed. It's a, as, as safe of a crossing as we have anywhere else on that boulevard.
Doesn't meet the requirement that we need playground equipment, playground areas with apartment buildings.
Is that a requirement?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Casey, we, we do, in, in some zoning districts, there is a requirement for a play area, particularly in the moderate-density residential, although there are certain findings that can be met to remove that requirement. In the Port District and in the River Rapids Overlay District, there is not a requirement for a play area. There are instead requirements for other types of outdoor amenities, kind of like what is, what is proposed here.
Commissioner, any other comments, concerns? Motion? Motion?
Mr. Chair.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I'll make the motion. In Planning Case 22-12, the Planning Commission recommends approval of the site plan as from the Planning Commission, Planning Department, with the following conditions: one, comply with Title 11; two, address all engineering and sustainability comments; three, enter into a site security agreement with the city; four, pay park dedication in the amount of $1,360 per apartment unit prior to the issuance of building permits; four, provide exterior guest bicycle parking; six, provide a copy of reciprocal easements; and then, I'll summarize, recommend approval of use flexibility for a density of 50 units breaker and recommend approval of dimensional flexibility for parking and building setbacks.
Mr. Chair, I, I might ask if Commissioner Knoblock, in, in the density flexibility with that final site area, it's a density of 51.4 units per acre. It's obviously tied to the site plan, but if...
I'll amend that to 51.4.
Okay.
Second amended.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion by Knoblock, and a second by Geisler. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion passes with Commissioners Bradley and Chair Schwartz opposed. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission with a decision to the City Council at their August 3 meeting.
Mr. Chair, I might just add, it is actually August 1st. That meeting is on a Monday due to, like, to unite.
I got the council meeting went to the Wednesday and not the Monday.
That, that was a change this year. It was, it was Monday.
Well, I just listened to the meeting last Tuesday and they still talked about Wednesday for the meeting.
Okay, okay, maybe I, oh.
Mondays.
Steve is saying it is Monday.
Okay, August 1st is Monday. All right, our last case for the evening is Planning Case 22-11, a site plan for the Tronsen Reserve Apartments at 15, excuse me, 1354 121st Avenue Northwest, Palmer Architects. Mr. Kroll.
Yes, so this is our, our last case, 2212, or 2211, excuse me, that's the wrong slide from switching it over. The applicant is requesting a site plan approval for a new 31-unit townhome development at 1354 121st Ave Northwest. And this proposal is located in the moderate-density residential district in which townhomes are permitted use. And so here's our location map again. This is currently existing undeveloped land and has a partial wetland, so the site is just over five acres with 1.25 acres in the southeast as designated wetlands. About 0.11 acres of the designated wetlands will be developed with the rest remaining native open space. The development is meant to be in harmony with the environment by preserving as much of the surrounding environment and be water-wise and, and energy-wise in their design. The site plan consists of eight triplexes, one sixplex, and then one single-family home. Each unit has three bedrooms, three bathrooms, two-car garage, and about 1,500 square feet of livable space in each unit. And then common areas, both public or common, kind of public open areas and private open space on the site and in that common area, proposing a double remada with barbecue grills, benches, walking paths, bike racks, and gardens. And so just looking kind of where this site is located, to the north is also our moderate-density residential district, and there are, I believe, duplexes there. To the south of the site is also our moderate-density residential district with complexes. And then to the direct west there of the site is our low-density residential, LDR2 District, and there are some single-family homes along the western edge of the site. And so looking at the, the site plan and our dimensional requirements, again, here it meets our, our minimum setbacks and coverages. The big thing with lot coverage is we have a 50% maximum coverage for buildings, parking, and drives, and, and pavement, and they're at that 50%. And then in terms of parking, our current code requires 2.5 spaces per unit, and then we make a distinction around at least one in an enclosed garage and one on the same lot as the dwelling unit, and then that one half coming into a common parking area. And so based on this unit size, that would need at least a minimum of 16 common spaces. And here they're proposing two parking spaces in the garage to fulfill that requirement of at least one in the garage, one on the same lot as the unit, and then have 20 common open parking spaces there. You might have noticed on the, the landscape plan or some other plans initially, on this kind of western edge, kind of three triplexes, and working with the architect, they re-proposed this six-unit, six, uh, sixplex here to ensure that it met our 20 feet minimum between the townhome blocks or bulks. Initially, I think there was 15 feet between those, and so we were able to work with the architect to get it into compliance for our, our building setbacks here. In terms of common open space, we would require at least 700 square feet per unit. This proposal almost doubles what the minimum needs of 46,000 square feet of open space in addition to the wetland, that's about 61,000 square feet of, of wetland area. Maybe related to the previous discussion in the moderate-density residential district, there is a note about having a play area, but it's up to the Planning Commission's discretion to, to offer that or to kind of waive it in lieu of other amenities that, on, on the site. And so as I can mention earlier, again, they're proposing a double remada with barbecue grills, benches, and, and gardens. Just north of the property is Wilderness Park, and then slightly to the east of the site is one of our city biking and walking trails. And so as staff, we felt we were okay with not providing a child's play area, but I didn't add it as a condition of approval, figuring that would be something that the commission kind of has some decision-making over and can kind of make way of what you would like to do with that, if requiring a children's area or if these amenities are okay. And then, I think if there's other... These are the floor plans of the townhome developments. So we're having the kind of 210-square-foot private patio as the entryway to the building and the garage here on the, on the main floor, and then above bedrooms and the living space and kitchen and, and such. And then this is the floor plan for the single-family resident that's proposed in the development as well. Maybe going back to the site plan quick, I'll just kind of mention, or again, labeled all the different kind of open common space areas and where that remada is the private open space of the porches and the sidewalks around the buildings for access. Because of the kind of amount of common open space on the site, staff were comfortable with a 210-square-foot private patio and then just kind of assuming that some of the open area in front of each unit would kind of be considered the private open space to get to that 400 per unit. These are just some renderings that were provided, and I'll just make a note that they're more for the material visualization of, of the townhomes themselves. It's not necessarily like a specific place on site. Looking at the site plan, there's not like townhome blocks that are like right behind each other with this corridor like that. So it's more just to kind of show the different redwood and stucco and, and stone materials of the buildings. There's a stone wall that kind of encompasses the private open area. And then on this one, for example, you'd see the metal doors with translucent windows. And again, on the site plan, the, the curb does actually come out 10 feet from the garage there, so it's not what it's showing in this picture, that it looks like it's coming right to the private drive. This is more just to, a representation of the materials and kind of getting an idea of what the buildings would look like. And then kind of with that and looking at our development guidelines in this district, looking at things like building massing and facades and roof shapes and focal features, the middle units of the townhome blocks do stagger, and the sides of the townhome blocks, again, also have some staggering materials on those east and west, or the single-unit building has a mix of staggering materials on its east and west elevation as well. Again, the middle units have blocks that are staggering to articulate the, the facades of the individual units. They're showing gable roofs with some AC kind of screening to, to act almost or look like a chimney, but screening some of the AC. They have the private patio and gates provided at each of the townhome units, and then there's a canopy over the main. And then there's a canopy over the main entrance of the single-unit building again for some different focal features on site. As mentioned, the buildings have a variation of simulated redwood, stucco, stone, and are kind of in a contemporary cottage style in those metal garage doors with window panels and having the private patio and porches to meet our requirement around a balcony or a porch on site. So we as staff felt that the design that they were proposing met a variety of those different development guidelines. In the landscaping plan, our code would require 26 over-story trees, 31 ornamental trees, 15 evergreen trees, and 92 shrubs. And then new tree plantings exceed the minimum, and that's not including the existing trees that they would remain on site. It might be a little hard to see on here, but some of the lighter trees are ones that are preserved. And I think there was a survey done, and so they have a number associated with the tree that... Those are trees that they'd be, that are existing that they want to preserve on site. And then the kind of darker outlined trees are the new proposal that they have on site. And then I'll just note that the code also requires 274 units of landscaping in the buffer yard between the low-density residential district here on the western edge. And what I counted or could kind of see from the plan, that it was like 530 units of landscaping. So more than enough for the buffer yard that we would require there to the low-density residential district. So I think, staff, we would be making a recommendation for approval of the site plan with a number of conditions. One of note is the park dedication fee in the amount of $42,800 be paid prior to the issuance of a building permit. There is a note on here around either a homeowners' association agreement or just a property maintenance agreement, that it's in our code that we would just have some kind of agreement so we know who's kind of managing the property in terms of the exterior buildings, any accessory buildings, and then the landscaping on site. And then on the site plan, there was a sign proposed kind of at the entryway. And so just making a note of any signage would just go through a separate sign permit and have to abide by our sign guidelines, so. And then the last thing that isn't a condition of approval in the staff report, I think just after some additional staff conversation after the agenda was posted, we had suggested maybe adding an addition, a condition of approval for signage being posted on site indicating no parking allowed on either side of the private drive. As the proposal is, there's two parking spaces in the garage and that the 10 feet kind of in front of the garage aren't really meant to be a parking space. And we just thought the signage could help kind of deter people from parking in front of their garage or along that private drive. Knowing that it is a private drive and a private street, there's not much the city can do around enforcing, but just an additional layer around some of the parking and to help with any kind of onsite management in terms of enforcing parking on site. And I believe we have applicant, representatives of the applicants here in person and on Zoom for any additional questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Crowe?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
The only question I have for Mr. Crowe is, I know was one of the criteria was not place excessive traffic boats on local streets. I know there's what, fire station two or three on that street? Number three?
Two.
Number two, okay. And that's like 200 yards east of this location or so. And my only concern is with the density and that seems fine, but the volume is my concern. There's, with a fire station being on that street, and it is kind of a thorough fair of, there is, I travel that way a lot too, and there's a lot of traffic. Is there going to be any consideration for lights, intersections, stop signs, anything to help mitigate traffic flow there, especially with a fire station on that street?
Yeah, that might be if, a question for the architect and the applicant for that. I guess, you know, we haven't talked about anything in terms of kind of signage within the site. And how this street is set up is more of a private drive, so really only folks that are living here, visiting someone would be driving through the site. But in terms of getting onto 121st Street, I, we haven't talked about that at all.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Knoblock, I would just add, you know, our city engineer obviously reviews these plans at the, at the planning level at this stage. He did not raise any concerns about traffic. Typically, you know, once they're closer to actually constructing the roads and such, he'll, he'll take a deeper look at that. I would envision that, you know, a stop sign would be required at 121st, and there'd be signage to that effect. I mean, my general sense, while 121st is a somewhat busier street, the traffic volumes are not such that having a residential driveway emptying out onto it would create significant conflict. Certainly nothing that would require a traffic signal. There are much busier, public street intersections nearby that are simply controlled with a stop sign.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Crowe, I guess I'm a little surprised that this one, we're not talking about a play area, especially for as large as this townhome area. Can you kind of elaborate on how staff became comfortable of not automatically putting it on there as a condition? Or what conversations you had with the applicant to that point? You know, I understand that there's a wetland nearby. The park that's to the north is a park in natural sense. It is not a play space relative to our other parks that are in the city. So could you just elaborate a little more on how staff arrived at that, where we're at?
Sure, yeah. I guess when I, the initial kind of narrative that was attached to the application and kind of an initial discussion with the architect, it seemed like maybe the, kind of the market for the units maybe didn't necessarily need a children's play area and that because they were proposing a variety of amenities. And how I interpreted the code, it felt like it was more of the Planning Commission had kind of the final decision on that, because you have the ability to waive that requirement. So I just kind of, I felt with the other amenities they were providing that it was okay and that it'd be a discussion point today.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mr. Crowe? Do practitioners like to make a presentation? Please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record.
So I'm Mary Chesvold. I usually go by Mary T. I've been a part of the city of Coon Rapids for 46 years now. And we have a campus, the Mary T Campus with Commune Rose. We bought this land many years ago. I do multiple family housing, some of them tax credits, some of them family, mostly seniors. And I was very interested in doing a project that would really look at a smart house and how that would operate and how we could make that viable as a rental property. So this would be about the eighth or ninth rental property that we have. So we manage these ourselves. We do our own maintenance team. And so I know that was one of the questions that came up, kind of thinking of all the questions that came up and answering them for you. I think we, the architect and I, have talked about the potential for a playground area located between those, that space between the two, three plexes. We do have, at Unity, we have a playground. At Palm, we have a playground. Sometimes they're used. Sometimes people walk to Sand Creek. We're on all of these paths, so they have access to the big playground. But we have tried to find some outdoor playground area that will really survive the winter and that will be safe for kids. So typically down in Savage, we have playground equipment. I think in Prescott, Wisconsin, we don't. Arizona, we don't because it's mostly seniors. So we try to look at the population, and if it's warranted, then there are nice outdoor playground equipment that we can have. So we're not asking not to do it. So we keeping almost all of the wetlands. I know probably for this piece of property, most people are concerned about the deer and where are the deer going to go. We're basically only touching about 4% of the wetland. So we believe that this trail from the Mary T Campus, which has a lot of wetlands on it, we own both land, both sides of the creek, so that we are trying to protect the wildlife that already exists in this community. On our campus, we have about three dozen wild turkeys, if anybody would like any of them. And we have multiple deer. So I think that could be one of the concerns here, because we know that deer travel this route to our campus as well as across the street by the fire department. But what we're really trying to do is to do the electric for cars, where people ultimately are going to go to electric cars, to do the solar, to do extra insulation on the outside of the building, the exterior as well as in the inside, to look at all of those things that we need in housing going forward. So that's really what I'm trying to do. And we have this long list of the things that everybody does, like energy-saving appliances, that's all a given. But we're trying to kind of push the envelope a little bit and see. They will be rental. We don't do any for-sale housing. We always keep all of our rental units. And we just see this as an extension of something that we think that we've done very well in the, in the past. I think if you look at, if anybody's been in Anoka, we bought the old cottages on Fifth. We've really tried to upgrade those cottages. I think we keep Unity really well. So we really, anybody who looks at our rental property should be really pleased with the way that we upgrade them. Or keep them, try to keep them up in good shape. The reason I have this architect and he's down in Arizona is because I met him many decades ago, and he's actually an inventor. And he does a lot of work with conservation of water, with energy. And so I really wanted to use him, oh, there he is, hi, Jerry Palmer. And really wanted to use him and his expertise with water plants and roofs and things like that. So that's why we have an architect in Arizona.
Mr. Palmer, is there anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, unmute, Chair.
Thank you. Chairman Schwartz, members of the commission. I'm Jerry Palmer. My company is Palmer Architects. I'm in Phoenix, Arizona. It cooled down today. It's only 109 degrees. It was 113 yesterday. So I just checked your weather report. I think you're around 80 degrees. I truly wish I was there. But anyways, I've known Mary T, as she mentioned, for probably 30 years. We were quite a bit younger when we first met. But we are still young at heart. I'll say, I'll stop right there. Anyways, she came to me with this very special project. I'm very excited working with her on it. The wetlands are not something that I see a lot of. I have done a project in Arizona, actually, but most of our state is desert. So I was enthralled about the wetlands, and I was also enthralled about the forest area and the challenge of trying to create an environmentally friendly site that Mary T is very much into the sustainability and also maintain the wetlands at a native position and try to keep the sense of forest in this project. So between our seven pages of landscape plans and the numerous trees that we're trying to salvage, I think we have a bit of both, a bit of the forest and a bit of the wetlands. We've only taken 4% of the wetlands out, which we'll be exchanging property for. And I was very excited to work on this project. I want to create kind of a contemporary cottage of these two-story units. I think will be a nice complement to the neighborhood and the environment. And I agree, I think Mary and, Mary T and myself would like to add some activity centers, playgrounds, maybe a bocce ball court or shuffleboard or maybe some lawn games. We have two areas. We have a common area in the center with the double remada with barbecues. And then we have another area by the mailboxes. And I would propose doing some activity centers in those areas. We're probably looking at more of a senior, but even the senior community will have grandkids. So I think that's something that we would very much like to add. I should have put it on the plan. I apologize for that. I missed it. And the comment only came up here towards the end of our process. So I'm open to adding some activity areas on those four playgrounds.
So I don't know if we need to go through, we have a long list of things like the outdoor lighting, insulation, things like that. But really, it's whatever you're reading about smart homes, that's kind of what we're trying to put into this, the energy-saving, water conservation, those types of things.
Yeah, along those lines, we're looking at keeping with the dark-skY ordinance. We want to basically have green belt buildings. Mary T has expressed an interest in doing solar on each of the units. We will be adding vehicle charging stations. And we'll probably look at pre-wiring the garages for future charging areas within the garage as well. Other items that we're doing is, you know, we're exceeding Energy Star standards. And our mechanical, electrical plumbing systems will all meet or exceed green standards. So if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
I actually have a question for Mary, if you don't mind. Would you mind for the people here, for the people that might be watching, would you speak a little bit to why you're focused on rental properties versus building for resale? I know that the adjacent neighborhoods, the adjacent townhomes with their homeowner associations, I know that they haven't always looked favorably on rentals. And I just, I know there is a place for it. I know that there's needs for it just for those individuals that might be listening, since you did mention that it's kind of maybe a little bit around why rentals versus selling.
So I'm in the healthcare business and in the jazz club at night. So we have Count Basie there, which is why I went to the end. We have Count Basie's orchestra, 400 people, so it was quite an honor for us. But I've been in the healthcare business. I do home health. I do hospice. I have lots of buildings related to home health. Very early in my career, I realized that many people were reimbursed by the government and that that's not giving me the quality organization that I wanted. And so that I needed to think about another line of business that is market-driven. And I was one of the fortunate people that inherited sizable land from my grandmother. And so rather than sell that land, I chose to develop it. But I didn't think that selling houses was what I wanted to do. I wanted to provide single-level, totally accessible, and Jerry knows that. We've redesigned those, every time we build a new villa by Mary T, we redesign it to make it better for seniors, which I felt, or people with disabilities, I felt were more of a rental market. So we don't really do any development, whether it's a group home or, and sell it to somebody else. We just keep it. So it never occurred to me to do, build to sell. And I had some proposals on this property before. People want to work with me to build to sell, and I'm just, that's just not who I am. And so I think that's why I mentioned earlier, we don't use outside companies. We have our own maintenance team, 24-hour call. We have a pretty elaborate rental system for people calling in for maintenance issues. I think in general, if you take a look at my properties, you'll see that we try to do a really good job of siding... try to do a really good job of siding, lawn care, snow plowing, as well as the inside.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. So down in Arizona, they, uh, just, this is off-topic, but down in Arizona, you know, here in Minnesota, we have senior housing, one or two stories with commercial below. Um, I had to take pictures of it and send it down to Arizona because they don't have it. And so in some property down in Casa Grande, we're thinking of, Jerry and I, built, uh, working to build one down there. And that will, the city told me, they have never seen it, they've never heard of it, they're very excited. So I always like to push, push a little bit. So, um, we're very excited, but if you see now, many, many places here in the Twin Cities are doing senior housing with commercial on the first floor. Um, but again, they've never seen it down there, they haven't heard about it, so I sent them lots of pictures.
I have a couple of comp questions. One, you, you mentioned these, you're, you're trying to direct it towards senior housing, but yet everything is two-story.
Well, I, you know, I didn't say that. I think I'm really interested in people who are interested in, um, smart homes, and they, they may be, um, not an aged population, because we have lots of housing for, for seniors. That's mainly what I do, is single-story. So this is probably maybe somebody who's left their three, four-bedroom big house, maybe empty nesters, who are really seeing that this kind of housing is really important and wants to experience it and understands it and buys into it.
All right, and then my second question...
That one-level house would be for me, so I would, like, that's why it's one-level, maybe.
That was gonna be one of my questions later, is what, uh, what about the one-story residents, but...
So right now, I live on campus, and I don't know if you know the, the brick building from eighteen eighty. That's the building that I live in. That's the house that I live in now, so...
Would you be able to, on the, uh, plat- show where you would be able to put a playground?
Yeah, Jerry, I think you, I was trying to look, uh, in the papers where you and I talked about it, but you were saying that we would put it between, I'm assuming you were talking about between twenty-seven and twenty-eight, but I think you were also mentioning, uh, next to thirteen?
Uh, yes. I think we could have a couple of activity centers.
Wilderness training.
Yeah, between twenty-seven and twenty-eight, we have the Ramada, double Ramada barbecue there, and maybe there's some lawn games adjacent to it.
I think you also mentioned on the side of twelve?
Uh, I think probably more between thirteen and twenty-five.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Where the mailboxes are.
Yeah.
Maybe there could be a sport activity like, uh, bocce ball or, uh, shuffleboard, something of that nature there. So some lawn games in the common area next to the Ramada, maybe it's, uh, uh, cornhole or horseshoes or something of that nature.
Thirty-one, thirty, thirty, thirty-one.
Maybe, uh, something like, uh, bocce ball or, uh, shuffleboard or something of that nature, uh, uh, up by the mailbox, uh, open space there.
What, what about a more standardized playground area for kids?
I think they would be, they would be in those same spaces between twenty-seven and twenty-eight, that's a common area. There's also back of the mailboxes between thirteen and twenty-five is a possibility.
What, uh, I was trying to get a definition, uh, and we kind of ran out of time, of the playground. When you say common area or common playground, are you considering like swings or...
Yes, swings, slides, what have you for...
Yeah, I, I don't know, Mary.
Yeah, we have some creative things over at Unity, um, there, those Geo Desert Climbers and things like that. So we would try to take a look at what's gonna hold up during the winter and what would be safe for kids.
And then, uh, onto your building materials. Could someone give me some kind of an explanation? What is simulated redwood?
It's actually a material that looks like redwood. It's a semiticious material.
Is it, is it actually wood?
No. It's concrete. It's a fibrous concrete board that's, um, good for fifty years. Doesn't color fade, and, uh, has a redwood color, and it has wood grain on it as well. So I've used it quite a bit, and, uh, it holds up exceedingly well. It's not cheap, but it really has an attractive look to it, and, uh, very close to that of redwood.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have any questions at this time?
Um, I, Mr. Chair, I do.
Commissioner Casey.
Yeah, so on the, um, site plan drawing, are those, you have the two round areas, are those like a traffic pattern thing, or they're, they're not roundabouts? Like, one down by the single-family home, that round?
I think that's...
Yeah, they're, they're kind of cul-de-sacs.
Oh.
Uh, and they're for fire engines, so the fire engine has a turning radius down at the end.
I see.
And then the other one's kind of an entry hole, so we have our entry.
Okay.
Probably take a, a brick or bomanite or type of material to break that up and kind of have that entry experience ID on both, on both of them. So it'll be a, a painting-type material, cobblestone or brick or something of that nature.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Oh, can I ask also, um, so these are two-story, and am I, was I looking at it correctly? I, I'm asking, what is on the entry level, ground-floor level? What is that?
So it's a two-car garage, and then it would be like a private bedroom down there with a, with a bathroom.
Yeah. So then, is it a, a half-flight up to the living area, or it's a full-flight?
Would be a full-flight.
Yeah, okay. And that's where you're...
Right, and then there'd be two bedrooms up there with bathrooms, and then hopefully a half-bathroom for guests, and then the living room, dining room, with a view out to the wetlands.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, that's what I kind of garnered from my search.
Your engineering equipment, furnace, uh, laundry area, would that be on the ground level or the second level?
And this...
It's on the ground, it's on the ground level. So what the ground level has is a two-car garage. It has a bedroom set up as a master suite with its own bathroom. And then underneath the stairwell, we have a washer dryer. So in order to, uh, get into the property, you walk around to a front courtyard. Each unit has a little private courtyard with a gate with three-foot rock walls. And you enter through that gate, and the front door is on the opposite side of the garage. Once you go in that front door, there's this full flight of stairs that go up. Uh, and on the second level, we have two more bedrooms, a great room, the kitchen, and two more bathrooms.
So Jerry, didn't we also talk about this stairwell being wide enough so that if somebody at some point actually needed a mobile chair, that this, I think that's what you're doing in your other buildings? You're actually building it wide enough so that, that it can take a chair lift up, if that's, if that's important for people?
Yes, uh, we can have that option for a hold-down automated chair.
We wouldn't install them in here, but it would be big enough so that you could have that.
Yes. And that would probably appeal if we do get some older residents, and it would be an option that we can add.
All right, anyone else have any questions at this time?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nabok.
Um, actually, uh, what I wanted to recommend is for, in the recommendation for a number eight for consideration, to, uh, have a play area inserted as into the plan. That's it. Because I know we're, we're talking about it, but I wanted to have it inserted as a requirement.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Commissioner Nabok, are you, are you, to, to put a more specific point on to it, you're, you're expecting a child's play area or a children's play space versus an adult play space that may be bocce ball or things like that, right?
That's a good point. It could, uh, it could be both, depends how young at heart you are. Um, a play area, I'm just saying in general, not being specific to child or adult. So a recreational area, so it could be pickleball, it could be, uh, bocce ball, it could be, uh, children's play area. A recreational area is what I would probably suggest. Basketball court.
Any, anyone else have comments on that area?
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Hayclaw. Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Hayclaw, go ahead.
I'm waiting for Commissioner Geisler to start doing cartwheels regarding all the energy efficiency and, and, uh...
I'll reserve my comments for later, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Um, this, this layout and kind of location reminds me of the, uh, project we approved down just off Robinson Drive not too long ago, um, across from Health Partners, where that's a s- one, you know, vehicle entry, and then they had triplexes and then things in there too. I think it was only a fifteen or fourteen-unit, um, development, but we, we shoehorned or inserted a play area in that, in that, um, area. I, I don't know what it's gonna look like. I can't remember if they told us anything about equipment, or was it designed for younger children? But we did put a children's play area in there for that reason, for, because it was gonna be multi-bedroom units that would likely be families, and just to provide something. Maybe you have to do something adult, something kid, you know, kind of balance it out a little bit. But something, I think, we have to address it, like you say, call it a recreational area, if you will, but that's a good, a good call.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmuckey.
So I guess the question to our commissioners, if we could be a little bit more specific for the applicant, right? Who are asking for a, 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 a common area, which they've already got on their plans, right? Um, I think they're looking though for the direction, are we being explicit in a children's playground, or is this more, um, just adult, um, type areas? So I'm hearing a couple. I think we owe the applicant a little bit more clear direction.
And I would favor a children's area, play area.
Or both.
Well, I said both, but...
I'm sorry.
It could go either way, but I think a children's area could be more applicable.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nabok.
In the application, it actually specifically states play area, not proposing play area. Commission may waive requirement. Developments containing more than eight dwelling units with two or more bedrooms must include a children's play area. So...
Children's play area.
Yes, that's what, that's what the wording says. What we decide or what we, what we choose to propose to the city council is another thing, so...
Um, I would, I would be more in favor of a children's play area, something focused on them. Each of these, um, units has a little private courtyard out front that you could almost term that adult space, although it, who knows that it's not big enough for, you know, cornhole or anything like that, but it is a private space, might be more adult space, but children's area is lacking.
Or it could be changed to be a fun area. It has to be fun, no matter what the activity is.
You're getting too creative with the terms now.
Uh, I, I would agree that I believe it should be a children's play area, and possible area that I would be looking at would be behind unit nineteen, seventeen and nineteen, seventeen and eighteen.
Can we just have them work with the...
Well, I'm just suggesting to what...
That is called common area. Yeah, you're right.
What Mr. Palmer might think about using that area for, for a children's play area?
There's a bit of topography and slope in that area. It, it, it kind of rises quite a bit. So I was thinking if we could have the lawn games or the play area next to the Ramada, it's a nice compliment. You could have birthday parties there, you could have family gathering, you can have the equipment right next to it. And then maybe in the mailbox area, so I can see some lawn games, lawn activities, and then in the mailbox area, maybe, uh, uh, shuffleboard or something of that nature.
You're stuck on shuffleboard, Jerry.
Yeah, yeah.
But pickleball, you are.
Pickleball, pickleball.
Pickleball, multiple-size basketball courts, but pickleball was invented for kids. Us adults have just taken it over, but, you know...
Yeah. You know, I've seen so many kids on the shuffleboard, uh, court, at least around here. You know, if you leave the equipment out, they're pushing it around, they're trying to do it. So I think we're very open to activity centers, and I think we need both. I think we need some for the children and some that could work both ways.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Yeah, I, I guess, um, just kind of based on this conversation, maybe a recommendation would just be a condition of approval that they provide a children's play area. I don't know if it's really like, you, we need to figure out right now exactly where it has to be. I think in those conditions, we would have that covered before we would approve the building permit, and I think even through our site security, for some of those things we would cover that. So it sounds like maybe folks do want a children's play area, and you could just have a general kind of condition of approval to provide one, and I think it would suffice the, the goal and the sentiment of the discussion.
I'd be, I'd be agreeable with that. All right, any other questions for the commissioners right now? We may have more later. All right, thank you. We may get back to you. All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing in case twenty-two-dash-eleven, site plan for Tronson Reserve Apartments, one-three-five-four, one-hundred-twenty-first Avenue, Northwest Palmer Architects. Anyone wish to speak at this public hearing? Please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, please. And try to limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is John Schmick. I live across from this development at one-six, one-two-one-six-two Bluebird Circle. Uh, I like hearing the comments about the building and everything, but this is a terrible site plan. Now, let's start with the easy ones. The, uh, staff report says there's one-point-two-five acres of wetland, but the site plan shows one-point-four-one acres of wetland. We don't know which one is correct. Staff report says point-one-one acres of wetland is gonna be impacted, but because we don't know the correct size of the wetlands, we don't know if that's correct. Uh, Hanup and Ca- or, excuse me, Anoka County on their website has this site at four-point-nine-seven acres. We're hearing now that it's five acres, and I think I heard early on that this might be a little bigger than five acres. We don't know what's correct. Um, your zoning code says site coverage of fifty percent. This plan is at fifty-point-five percent, so you're already over the limit on the site coverage. This plan is at 50.5%, so you're already over the limit on the site coverage. Your zoning codes say that you can intrude into the setback areas by a maximum of two feet. There are four units in this project, units two, five, eight, and eleven, that if you look at the site elevations, and I'm assuming now that those front units along the front, the first floor is on the setback line, the elevation shows that those units are, extend three feet into your setback area. That's a violation of zoning. The engineer's report says that the hundred-year floodplain is at elevation eight-seventy-three and these buildings have to be at least two feet above that. Well, the landscape plan shows that on building fifteen, and there's a problem with this landscape plan because they put the sidewalk right in the middle of the creek. Now, obviously, there's an error in overlapping between the site plan and the landscaping plan. Something went wrong with that map. I don't say it's intentional. I'm just saying, we don't have the right information. Zoning states no land disturbing or development activity shall be allowed on slopes of more than 18%. Eighteen percent or more. Unit, building with unit thirteen through fifteen, I estimate that slope is 20%. That building should not be built. Zoning requires wetland filling. Wetland filled or drained must be replaced with restored or replaced wetland of equal public value. There's no comment anywhere in here about what's being restored. They've already acknowledged that point one-one acres is going to be impacted. And we don't know if that's the correct number, but there's no mention of how this is going to be compliant with this portion of zoning. Now, this may be an issue for the Coon Creek Watershed District, but there's some negative impacts going on here to the wetlands. Zoning section eleven dash one-one point, one-one oh-two-point-four-A requires buffer areas for, to protect the wetlands. I don't see any buffer areas on these drawings. And I'm blaming the city zoning codes for creating this next problem. Your language in the zoning code for moderate density talks about calculating density on gross acres. And that's great if your wetlands are only about 5% of your site, you can accommodate that. But here, the wetlands, based on the numbers on these drawings, is about 1.41 acres. That's almost 28% of your site. So now your zoning codes are allowing you to create phantom units on land that you can't build on and shove it over onto the upland that you can build on. So now your density over there is about 8.5%. That's high density. That project is going to look and feel and operate like a high-density development and it is not compliant, compatible, let's say compatible, it's not compatible with nine other developments in the area that currently exist, who have an average density on usable land area of about 5.4 units per acre. This project is at 8.5 units per acre on usable land area. It's too dense, this density is like 60% over site capacity. It's the wrong project on this site. Let's see. I've got a list of nine projects here and their site density based on usable acre, but I'm going to skip that for right now. Let's talk about elevations and filling. These buildings have to be at eight point, eighty, eight-seventy-five elevation. Units one through twelve are above that. They do not require any fill. Units thirteen through fifteen, approximately 40 to 50% of that site pad is below the eight-seven-five mark, which requires fill on the front end of it at the highest difference of about three feet. Okay, units sixteen through eighteen, only about 5% of that site is below that number. Units nineteen through twenty-five, approximately 75% of that site is below the eight-seven-five level by about three feet. Units twenty-two through twenty-four are 80 to 90% below that level, averaging, with the highest difference being about three feet. Units twenty-five through twenty-seven, again, 80 to 90% below the eight-seven-five level. Units twenty-eight through thirty-one are 100% below that level of eight-seven-five feet. Now, in the case of the house, and I'm sorry, Mary, I hate to take your house away from you, but that building should not be built. That difference is five feet at its maximum level. And when you look at the standards in your zoning on steep slopes of 18%, if you lift, if you have to fill five feet, you're talking about going out 28 feet to maintain that 18% slope. You're well into the wetlands again. So again, we don't know how much of the wetlands are going to be impacted here. So I guess what I'm trying to say tonight is you don't have the information you need to pass judgment on this site. Staff does not have the information that they need to evaluate this site. At a minimum, they should have the actual survey so we can determine the wetlands. I would recommend tonight that you table this proposal or reject it until these issues can be identified, or we've identified, that these issues can be addressed and evaluated. If you take that 5.4% average of the other developments in the area and apply it to the usable area, take out the wetlands, you could reasonably do about 20 units on this site, maximum. You're nowhere near 31 units. I'll let it go at that and if you have questions.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in the public hearing? Please come to the microphone, give your name and address. No. Mary, I ask that you wait till we're done with the.
Just have what they're talking about.
B. Davidson, I'm one-one-nine-seven-nine Bluebird Street. I look out, I see the forest. Now I'm going to look out and see the apart, these buildings, actually these rental buildings. Want to know what, what trees are going to be left so I can at least look at trees and also want to know where these playgrounds are going to be. I don't want them built right in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record.
I'm Annette Sloniker. We live at fourteen fourteen, one hundred and twentieth Lane Northwest. So we do have a pie-shaped lot that kind of backs up to the abutment of that. We currently have a berm wall that comes up and there are some pine trees. After listening to all of this this evening, I'm concerned with the population that could come into that five-acre area, the noise that it could bring. I also foresee parking being an issue. There's been no talk or anything if that berm wall is going to remain or if it becomes a retaining wall. What's that going to do to our views, where we, you know, abut to that? I mean, there are, two of our neighbor's homes look right into that on the back side. According to what I've seen after looking at all of the drawings, it looks like I'll be looking right at the six-plex aspect. You know, do we have an aesthetic aspect of what that's going to look from the backside and how far that's going to be away from, you know, that property line? And then the biggest part is, so disheartened to see, I mean, we live with this, we've lived at our property for 30 years. We knew Ted Tronsen really well. We spoke with him on a weekly basis. It's going to be very sad to see the nature preserve go away. I mean, I look out every morning to see this, we have 27 turkeys that roost in those trees. We have sixty-eight deer that come through. The eagle comes in and feeds on the land. I mean, there's a lot of animals that are making home in that property currently. So those are just some of the questions that I came up with this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else wish to speak to the public hearing? Mr. Bucciconi, anyone on Zoom for this public hearing?
No, sir.
Thank you. One final call for the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing. Mr. Palmer, is there possibly any comments or answers you might give to any of the points that were raised?
Can I just speak?
All right.
So I don't want to speak to what the city saw or they didn't see, but I am convinced that we submitted all of this. I, I have been in business for 46 years. I didn't just come up with the site plan without knowing what the wetland delineation was or what the land survey is. That's just not something I would do. So we've had the land survey done last fall, so we know exactly the points of where the land is. In 2013, we did a wetland delineation and I have all the wetland delineations here from 2021. So I just beg to differ with the fact that we didn't do our homework. People can still object to what I'm doing, but I didn't like the idea that, that you thought that we weren't a conscientious developer and would not have looked at what is our land survey? Where are the wetlands and what is the possibility? So these are all things that, that I have with the ground level and where it all is and those are all recent in the last year. We are working with the wetland delineation people. They already found wetlands that we could buy. I mean, we're already working with Coon Creek wetlands, so we're very concerned about the nature. I will tell you that one of the reasons I decided to go ahead with this project is that I got a very, very, very good land offer by, from somebody who wants to build a three-story assisted living memory care. And I didn't think that was a good use of that building. Maybe you wouldn't have approved it, but that's what, they wanted a, a three-story assisted living memory care here in Coon Rapids and that's the largest piece of undeveloped land. I think they found some land somewhere else, but Al Hamon was very clear with me, they want that land. That's what they want. I'm the one who decided that I would rather do the smart houses than sell the land. So that's my option, but I do want to say I've done my homework. Whether we can agree to what the, the height should be and, and all of that, that's, that's up for the city to look at and our engineer to look at. But I just want to defend the fact that we're very well-prepared in terms of where that wetland is with that land and where the elevations are and where the survey is.
Thank you. Mr. Crowe.
While he's walking, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bucciconi.
Someone took issue with the ordinance in the way the computation of density is. The commission needs to consider the ordinance as it's written currently. How it was interpreted by someone during a public comment is not accurate. I don't agree with it. The time to take issue with that particular ordinance was when this body in the city council considered it. We'll take a look at it. I'm confident, given that comment, but you're to consider it as it sits before you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
And Mr. Bucciconi, if you could clarify as well, so when we, when we make a recommendation or a requirement that complies with Title XI, that means the entire section of Title XI, correct?
It does.
Thank you.
Well, and I'll, I'm sorry, I can't help but add a little there. We make sure everybody complies with all of our ordinances and the idea that we're not doing that, it's just not accurate.
Thank you. Mr. Crowe.
Sure, just from, you know, some of the comments maybe around the acreages and, and wetland impacts. There was a wetland permit application attached as part of the different submissions that the applicant had and that's where I pulled the numbers from, was from that report around the five acres and the point one-one acres. It looks like here the wetland impacts are 4,700 square feet in their wetland permit application. That wasn't attached to the, the agenda, because it wasn't necessarily like a required thing, but we had worked with the engineering division to request that information and got that. And then in the engineering comments, it was brought up maybe around that kind of eight-seven-five kind of elevation. Those pieces are addressed in the engineering comments and we would work with the applicant throughout the process after this, before issuing building permits to work with them and recommendations and working with the Coon Creek Watershed, which it sounds like the applicants already are. In terms of like what you would see next door, I think it's a little inaccurate to say that all of a sudden there's going to be no trees and that you're only going to see townhomes in their landscape plan. They are maintaining plenty of trees and planting new ones and it does meet like what would, what we require as a buffer yard. So if someone's living here, like it'll be a pretty thick tree berm. I mean, you might see the, I guess it's, I can't tell you if you'll see the townhomes or not, but there is a buffer yard there nonetheless. And I think those were the main things that I could address maybe at this moment, but happy to take a look later and, and follow up with anything that maybe I missed.
Thank you. Commissioner, questions, comments?
What do I do? I'd like to speak if I could.
Mr. Palmer, go ahead.
Chairman, first of all, there are some real inaccuracies here. We did surveys and we took and located every tree on that site. We got over 230 trees that have been located so that we know exactly which ones could be salvaged. And we're trying to maintain the forest pretty much as-is on the west side of the property. We're trying to maintain as many trees as we can on the north side. So, you know, to say we didn't have a survey, no, we have surveys. To say the wetlands isn't delineated, we've had engineer working on it. We've had two engineers working on it. And as we show in the site plan, we're only taking out 4% of the wetland. We're salvaging 96%. You know, that's, that's pretty amazing and that's accurate. And the wetlands area is accurate. It was done by Craig Chokum, who also provided the survey and provided us with the specific wetland area. So that first speaker, he's going to change your codes and requirements. He needs to start at a more basic level, not come into a project and the parameters have been set. And today, we're going to have new guidelines because I want them that way. That is totally unfair and unreasonable. So anyways, I could address some other things, but I thought that was a very inappropriate comment and I don't agree with much of what he said.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmuckey.
I guess I just want to comment to the effect that I do think that the applicant has, is demonstrating a solid, good faith effort and conscientious effort to try and, and make sure that they are preserving as much of the natural beauty of the land and so forth. It's like, it really is, I mean, they own the property, right? And there are certain guidelines that they have to follow with regard to redeveloping it to make sure that it meets the minimum requirements that we've put in place with regard to the number of trees and, and so forth. But at the end of the day, there's a lot of things that are, are within their choice. We have seen properties within this community where there are developers who've come through and clear, clear-cut the property, right, not leaving a single tree. That's their choice. I mean, they then still have to put in the minimums, but, you know, that was their approach. And I guess I do appreciate that this applicant and the developer is, is very self-conscious about wanting to try and preserve wildlife, to not disturb it, to try and keep some of that in there. They could have, right, that as she said, she could have sold this off. As she said, she could have sold this off, and it could be another apartment building, right? So I do feel like, in terms of this applicant, I feel like they're doing the best that they can actually, above and beyond, to try this and make this a meaningful property in the community.
And I think it's important to also have the public understand while property may have been undeveloped for 23 years and you've looked on it as a natural area full of wildlife, the property is owned by someone who does have the legal ability to develop that property within the guidelines set by the city. And that's what we're here to do, along with the city staff, is to see that they meet those guidelines. There's a lot of hoops that must be gone through and up to it, including the Coon Creek watershed district. So just to say that a project is going to go forward until it meets all the requirements of all the various agencies, all those requirements need to be met. So to think that they're not going to be met by a project just because we want to improve it, that's not how it works. Commissioner, anyone have, Commissioner Bradley?
I just wanted to add, the commission's purpose and duty is to help the city develop property in accordance with the code, with the guidelines, to its highest and best use and for the benefit of the citizens and the city. They try very hard to do that. The city staff works diligently toward that goal. There's always going to be competing interests in any project. And we try to manage those as best we can. But believe it or not, we are trying to do what we believe is right for the city.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Geisler.
I do want to say to Commissioner Heikle's preamble here, there is a significant amount of sustainability going into this project in forethought before we've even put a shovel close to the ground here. And that is one of the more progressive things that we've seen in the city in the years that I've been paying close attention to it. I think it creates a sustainable, long-term, high-quality project. And that is the kind of thing that we want to have in the city when we're doing it. It might, we don't, the more that we can have long-term investments, the better benefit it gives to the city for the long haul. And that's what we're seeing with this project, is those kinds of considerations. You know, the fact that we're considering onsite solar, the fact that we're considering onsite EVs, especially for rental projects, that is the number-one topic that I see in the other boards that I serve on as the biggest gap towards adoption, towards an EV or battery future, is multi-tenant and rental properties being capable of handling this. So the fact that the applicant's already considering it, already looking at it, already looking at sustainable investments ahead of time without being forced to do so is great. They're doing that on their own recognizance. That's awesome. With respect to the play area, the play area will be on this property wherever the applicant finds it's the best fit in use there. I agree that we need a children's play area on here. I would contend that the ramada and barbecues is the adult play area. So I think ultimately, you know, it's a good use. It's a longstanding developer owner in the area and in the region who we know takes care and will absolutely work with the city staff to make sure that everything is met with and works appropriately with what we're expecting. So I'm looking forward to seeing this project be completed in the future.
Anyone else? Are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Schmoki.
In planning case 22-11, I recommend or I approve the proposed site plan with the following conditions: all engineering comments be addressed, all sustainability comments be considered, the applicant enter into a site security agreement with the city, park dedication in the amount of $42,800, which is 1,360 times 30 townhome units plus 2,000 times one single unit, be paid prior to issuance of the building permit, homeowners association agreement or property maintenance agreement must be approved by the city attorney. All signage is subject to separate sign permits, compliance with Title 11, and the addition of number eight, which is the addition of a children's play area.
Second. Motion by Schmoki, second by Heikle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? And the motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council in 10 business days if someone so chooses. Otherwise, good luck. And moving on to other business. Mr. Croll, do you have anything?
Yeah, for the August Planning Commission meeting, we'll have a site plan proposal for a salon studio in the Riverdale area between Schneiderman's Furniture and Dick's Sporting Goods and kind of the vacant lot there. And then we have a second one for the River Trail Learning Center. Might have recalled they had an addition back in 2021, and they're coming forward with an additional addition on their project and some circulation improvements on the site. And then we have a home occupation permit as well next month.
All right. Commission, anyone have anything for other business?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Well, prior to that, please. Mr. Croll, it's been longstanding part of this commission that building plans, when they come to us, include things like building materials with colors and what have you. And somehow, we've gone away from that the last couple of years. I would really like to see the staff work with petitioners in the future, that we start seeing materials, and especially colors, into the future for future plans.
No, that sounds good. I know Matt and I talked about that, and so I just didn't get it for this planning commission meeting, but I'll make a note of that. For the future to request those sample materials.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
If I may, Mr. Croll, I will also commend you on adding your headers before each section for consideration of whether it does meet, exceeds, very exceeds. That's extremely helpful, and I appreciate the improvement. Thank you very much.
Okay. Good to hear.
All right. Was it Mr. Schmoki that made the motion to adjourn?
I did.
And who was the second?
I'll second that.
Geisler to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.